I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on August 19th, 2019 of the Board of Education for Dearborn Public Schools. Roll call, please.
Hussein Barry.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Michael Mead.
Here.
Adam Moszep.
On vacation.
James Thorpe, here. President Pelichkov.
Here. Next, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag will be led by Director of Communications, Mr. David Mustin.
Thank you. Just want to quickly, I noticed going through some old children's books around the house, I found this one. It actually is a book from school, not my schooling. It's way too good condition because I'm way too old, but an elementary school book that talked about our new flag and about the flag, and I just thought that that was kind of appropriate, that I just kind of happened to run across it on the same weekend-
And the day you're doing it.
-that I was doing the Pledge of Allegiance. But good to see that, you know, even at the elementary grades, we make sure the kids are up on a flag etiquette and origins of our flags. With that, I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mustin.
You're welcome.
Next item, please.
Superintendent's update.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. Have a few on agenda items. Today, we're going to have a presentation on the bond. I know the board did formally approve that last month, and information has already been going out. There was a press release, and more information is forthcoming, so we will have a presentation on that today. Also, I was going to call up, I might as well color up right now, retirements, Dr. Chokol. This is not an agenda item, but I'm just going to have you stay up there and then just talk about what we've done with multi-agent split classes. I know we have a group here from Deval, and we had a very good meeting last week, so we appreciate the parents' involvement there.
Good evening. Retirements. Alvin Nasr Ahmed, 23 and two-thirds years of service. Frank Bosio, 32 and a quarter years of service. Anna Dawson, 23 years of service. Daniel Lay, eight and a half years of service. Mary Beth Mailer, 21 years of service. Catherine Pila, 10 and a half years of service. Michael Rangos, a year and a half of service. Carol Will, 13 and a quarter years of service. Sharon DiMatteis, 32 and a third years of service. Stacy Flynn, 12 years of service. And Shirley Flegger, 21 years of service. We thank them for their service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's congratulate all retirees. And I always send handwritten cards to all the retirees as well. And then I'm just going to ask, if it's okay, we just move to non-agenda items?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm going to have Dr. Chokol just kind of remain to just give a quick summary of what we've done with between, you know, when we get into staffing levels, and we had layoffs and recall this year, and we didn't have a huge number, but it was enough to disrupt. And I think, you know, it's been several years since this has happened. Part of it is we're still waiting on Lansing, and that's part of it because we don't have a budget from Lansing yet. So I know, like, our local representatives of Humud and Santana and them are very supportive of getting more funding, but the reality is Lansing didn't provide that. We also had in some schools where enrollment wasn't the same. And so the last few years, people have kind of gotten, I guess, used to the fact that we've had one of the lowest class sizes at elementary in the history since I've been here at 22, and I've been 24 years in the district. And then what we were able to do, because we had the millage and we had the at-risk funding that came, we were able to be a little more aggressive with adding elementary positions earlier. We were not able to do that this year because essentially we're making about two years of cuts in one year because we didn't want to be so disruptive last year to classrooms. And so we were able to have some one-time money that Mr. Wall was able to use, whether through the millage, and then secondly, through some tax collection errors that were actually in our favor, that Mr. Wall caught, which was a positive. So we, last year, we didn't have to make the cuts, but really, we could have, and maybe we should have. I still feel good that we didn't, and I think the board committee does, because we didn't disrupt families. So this year, we're back to, you know, layoff and recall in our formula, and I know the union sat, the union talked last time, and so it was unsettling to people. Now, most of the positions have now, those that were laid off, most, not all, but most have now been called back because of retirements and other things that have happened. But some people have still been surplus, which that means that they, there's a reduction of a position in their building, and therefore, they have to get reassigned to another building, and there's a formula for that. Along with that, then the building principals, and I was principal at Deval, so I kind of understand Deval very well, although it's now 10 years ago, is building principals then make the decisions on class configurations. Central office is not involved with that. We could provide advice, like the executive directors, but we do not get involved in deciding how many second, third, or fourth. It's part of the contract, it's part of the administrator's responsibility, and so, you know, when I was principal, that's what I did. The superintendent did not get involved in that. It's not our appropriate process. So I just kind of wanted to bring all that out quickly and then let Dr. Chokol just kind of mention about split multi-age classes.
And can I real quickly clarify, when Dr. Maliko talks about the millage, she's talking about the Wayne Resa Millage?
Oh, thank you.
So that it's not our millage, it's the countywide millage, which is due to expire, I believe, next year?
2022.
2022. And so that is not, that's a temporary funding of money at this point in time. We don't know whether it will be re-voted on. We know that Wayne County is looking at putting it up to ballot vote again, but it's not a sustainable revenue source. It's a one-time pot of money from Wayne County's millage. Okay, thank you.
So in our staffing efforts, as, you know, based on trying to protect class size, we have looked at very low ratios in our K-2 and slightly higher ratios in our 3-5 classes. So having said that, in the spring, with the projections that are received from student services, principals are given the number of students that we expect to arrive in the fall, and then based on whether or not that number of students agrees with the number of staff that they have relative to, you know, dividing roughly by 25 and then just kind of moving those numbers out, we determine whether or not there are sufficient teachers for that number of students, or whether or not we do indeed need to lower the number of teachers in a school based on the number of students that we expect. So the principals take that number, they take the staff, they come up with a configuration, which basically allot a certain number of students to a teacher, and then if there are split classrooms needed, where there are two grades in one classroom, then the principal makes that decision. The executive directors advise, support when needed, but that is a building-based decision. So knowing that this spring, there were a number of surpluses at the elementary level due to the fact that class sizes were very, very low last year, many of our elementary schools did indeed surplus a teacher. So also, knowing that in some cases, the projection is right on, and in some cases, it's not right on. So we don't know until the students begin coming. What we do know is that the students that are in our split classrooms, based on an analysis done for the last three years by Dr. Patterson, our director of assessment, that the achievement of our students, on average, in the split classrooms is no different. It's not better, but it's certainly not lower than students in self-contained classrooms. We don't have a very large number to work with. We generally, I think last year, we had 14 split classrooms, and this year, it looks like we'll have 13 or 14, depending upon how the numbers come in.
And that tends to agree with literature in the field, you know, the different studies, and a lot of it is not recent studies, per se, but some of the board members, a few, three years ago, we had a presentation where we had students came and talked about their experience, and we did a, we had data that came-
Both of my children were in split classes at elementary level back in the 1990s. This has been going on for a long time.
I want to add that I had two sons that were also in split classes. One is an upper classman and one is a lower classman. And what they gained, and I think it was beneficial to them, but what they gained is the lower classman gained in maturity, and the upper classman really gained in his skills as far as imparting information and being sort of, I don't want to use the term mentor, but just being able to impart information, and so I think they both benefited from the experience.
Well, you know, truly, the deciding factor in every classroom is the classroom teacher, and of course, all of our outstanding support staff, and I cannot say enough about the teachers at all of our schools relative to the efforts that they make to ensure that every student gets what they need, and the teaming and the collaboration that they might organize in order to ensure that third, fourth grade, second grade, depending upon where the splits are, are taught in, with peers, and that students stay connected with each other. So our teachers really do go above and beyond when it comes to those efforts to work together.
And quite frankly, when you think about it, we have a Montessori program as well, which also doesn't adhere to a strict age-based classroom, in its concept at least. My mother was a Montessori school teacher. And generally, you pay good money to get your children in a Montessori school setting, so they also have driven a recognition that age of the student is not necessarily the determining factor of the success in the classroom. It's the teacher and the way they manage the classroom and provide the instruction. And so we're not saying when we say that, you know, you have the upper-level student, they're not, they're not taking the place of the instruction of the teacher. They're not there to help manage the classroom setting with the lower. But they do provide a different set of eyes and input for those, and the students who go into those classrooms are generally selected so that they are prepared to function well in that kind of an environment. But their instruction is full and directed towards their level of need.
My, my point was he gained leadership skills just because he was looked to as one of the oldest kids in the classroom.
Yeah, I just, I just know sometimes I, what I hear from parents is their first thought is that the older kids are going to be taken advantage of to kind of babysit the younger kids in the classroom. That's not how the classroom is styled or managed at all. And I've experienced it with both my girls in years past.
Yes, Trustee Thorpe.
Not necessarily on splits, but just numbers in general. We've got our staffing based on the projections. Next week, once we're back in school and we actually see how many kids are in the classrooms, how quickly do we respond to any staffing changes? Do we look at the first day? Do we wait until the official count? What are we usually going to do?
Daily. We look at, the first day obviously is a half-day, and so we're ensuring, you know, as much as possible through encouraging everyone to come on the first day. We are prepared to look at the students that actually show up and make staffing recommendations, obviously, with our superintendent's approval, every day as we look at the numbers moving through.
It's a normal routine that type of year.
But we try to make it as least disruptive as possible to the building. Any more questions? All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and I just, you know, with the layoffs and, and thank you, Dr. Chokol, you know, we don't want, we didn't want to lay anyone off. We didn't want to cut. We, you know, we, you know, we know that Michigan, and I've put it on my social media, I've mentioned it, you know, over 15-year period is rated, some say 49th or 50th out of 50 states in education funding growth. So hopefully, it's something that can be fixed, and, you know, we support our locals that are trying to get more funding for schools up in Lansing, and hopefully, they'll come up with a budget that is more favorable to us, and then, you know, that would be good for our students. The, I know Ms. Iman Ahmed was going to, I don't know, oh, is she here? Okay, I'll call her up right now. She was approved last month, but she was out of town, so let's give her a congratulations for her position. I appreciate the shame.
Thank you so much.
So I just wanted to bring her in front of the board like I normally do, if, since she got approved last month, she wasn't able to make it, so-
What's your position? What's your new position?
Principal of Salina Intermediate School.
There you go.
Thank you.
And I've had the pleasure now of hiring her three times, when she was a teacher at Salina, assistant principal, now a principal, or recommending to the board.
Thank you, and I, yeah, I was away for the summer, and honestly, I couldn't wait to come back. It was a true homecoming, coming back last week. Some fun facts, it's a school that I attended, preschool through sixth grade. I taught there, taught over at Salina for over a decade. And today, during one of the meetings with my teachers, my instructional coach, I found out that she was my former third-grade teacher. She was, she taught back in 1989, third grade, and she only, she was, she was only at Salina for a year and was surplus. I always thought she went away to a different district. I didn't realize she was still with the Year in Public Schools, and she truly had an impact on me, one of my favorite teachers, so it was just an emotional, an emotional meeting, realizing that Ms. Julie Leep was Ms. Julie Smith, or Ms. Julie Leep is now Mrs. Julie. Ms. Julie Smith is now Mrs. Julie Leep, so it was, so it was a great meeting. Looking forward to working with the Salina community to make great things happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maliko, and thank you to the Board of Education. Appreciate it.
And the last thing I just want to mention, congratulations again, so is just that, we start school next week, we have a half-day on Monday, we'll have cabinet members out in the buildings. I've already committed to Deval that I will be visiting Deval that first day, among other schools. I usually go to several that first half-day, that whole week, actually. I spend most of my time going out to buildings, and, you know, if board members are available, we always invite board members. I think Joanne's going to be sending out a list, if you're able to. We also know people work and have other things, but, so we'll be out in the school, and we're excited to welcome our students back, you know, to another year of, I think it's the second most exciting time of year is the first day of school, that and graduation, they kind of are close together, but graduation is one, and then the first day of school for me is two, so. So, yes.
You all set?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, since we're-
Yes, Trustee Barry.
Well, welcome back. You had a nice vacation, too.
Yes, I did. Thank you.
When you were gone last week at the college meeting, we discussed an issue that I want to get your opinion on, so agenda items, requests for information. The policy reads, "Board members shall be considerate as possible when asking staff to prepare detailed reports, information not previously planned for preparation. Such reports shall be requested only when the board member believes such a report is essential to his or her understanding of a problem. When heavy pressures on the staff members due to the demands of the district business and concerns, board members shall seek the concurrence of the board before requesting the preparation of such additional detailed report." I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. At what point do we seek, you know, our colleagues to find out this is something they're interested in, you know, to bring information forward? Let's say, for example, if I believe there's a problem going on, or maybe a good thing going on, and I ask for information, at what point do you want me to seek, you know, support from my colleagues to ask for that request for information?
Well, that was, that came up in the policy committee, so I guess it's kind of what-
We had a 15-minute discussion last week, so I-
Okay, I missed it.
Yeah, I said, I just want to bring you on board, so we're on the same page.
I'm good with whatever we determine together as a team, you know, between, you know, you as board members and me as superintendent, and obviously, with the college president, you know, that's another avenue, so I think whatever we do, you know, we have our systems where it gets requested at the meeting, and we're usually, you know, we put it in the board briefs and every, all the information, and if needed, we come back and we'll do a report if that's what was requested. Sometimes we can't always do it right away because of the schedule, but I'm good with the consensus of the group, basically, is what I would say, is what we think will, you know, work for everyone. I also appreciate a lot of times the board members, you know, giving me a heads-up, okay, this has come, like, you know, something might come up, and I get an email or a text from someone saying, oh, I'm going to ask this thing, so it helps us too and we can get prepared, and I think you guys like that in return, you know, for preparation. So when I, when I kind of know in advance, especially with a district our size, with so many things going on, so that advanced notice, and I think that was discussed last month, if I recall, in your committee meeting, Roxanne, so that's always appreciated. I'm sure President Cavalluna would probably agree there, and I think, you know, the board does a good job trying to do that all the time for us, but I'm good with what, you know, the consensus of the group, because I'm here to serve you, serve the community, and, you know, there, it depends, too. Some reports take longer because it's more detailed, and it takes more time, and it might take longer. That would be the only consideration, I would say, is that sometimes you have to understand some, some reports can't, you can't get it right away, whereas sometimes, it's a quick question that's easy to answer. So I guess I would be good with what, and I wasn't there at the, and I didn't read the minutes from last week, but I would be good with the consensus of us as a team agreeing to what is the protocol. I think that, for me, would be, my recommendation would be to make a consistency, you know, for how we want to handle that, and I think that's what you were talking about.
Yes, and I was, I was going to bring this up later, when it, at a different point, but one of the things I've been noticing, and that's why I went back and looked at what was our, because I remember back when I first started on the board in 2008, it was handled differently, and possibly, Trustee Lane can remember as well, when we did at times have to ask, does everybody want this information or not? One of the things we've kind of drifted away from is we have on the official agenda for the public board meetings a place for asking for information and/or future agenda items, which is the appropriate place to ask for new information or get data requests. That way, the rest of the board members know what another trustee is looking for, and maybe can add their own thoughts or questions to it, or, and that's when we would decide whether it's something, hey, does everybody want this information or not? Lately, there's, there's a lot of individual questions just going directly to the superintendent or the college president. My suggestion is, because I know in the past, those kinds of questions were reserved for somebody from the community asks a question, and you need to get an answer, so you go directly to the superintendent or the college president to get that answer, to respond to a community member's question that you, you need an answer to, or that you have read the agenda or board briefs, and some things generates a question in your mind that you need an answer to referencing that. But whenever, so that would be an individual request for information. But when there's a request for a certain amount of data or a report, because you're thinking about a decision that may, may be made down the line, then the entire board should be included in that question, request, because it might be a direction that we're looking to go in or not, and we need to all be on the same page for those kinds of questions. So that's, that would be the opportunity then to say, hey, look, we don't understand, none of us are interested in this kind of thing, how much is, time is that going to generate for you? Or we can just give direction or advice at that point in time for the superintendent or college president to let us know, hey, look, that's going to require a lot more effort, and right now, we have a lot of things on our plate, can you wait until, and then we can have that conversation? So that's, and that's how we, we have done it traditionally in the past, as I recall.
My recollection is that this was discussed and the policy was brought up when there was, when there were individuals that were excessive in dominating requests for information. So one person was always asking for information, and other people found the information somewhat pointless, maybe, or considered maybe it was a distraction from the real issues at hand. So I think it was an attempt, as I recollect, to limit domination by any single individual, particularly when someone like Dr. Patterson is running all kinds of reports to produce statistics on this or that, or whatever. It can take, it obviously takes staff time, and that was the concern, as I recollect.
Sure, no, I believe it's a great idea, because it'll get us talking. So if I see a problem down the road or something, and we have a discussion here before we ask, if there's no support, if people say, hey, no, everything's fine there, then, you know, me personally, I would back up. And what Trustee Lane's saying, I know Trustee Moszep was just joking around last week when he said, oh, okay, I give up, I won't ask for any more questions. I know that's not what the intent of the policy is.
No, not at all.
Yeah, because all seven of us are, would like to think we're independent thinkers. We have people to answer to in the community. I get phone calls like everybody else, you know, I run into people at Kroger, talk to people on the phone, and people say, hey, you know, can you get this information, or there's a problem here that you need to address? But if, you know, if I bring it forward and there's no support to what I'm about to ask, then I guess there's no need to have, you know, Dr. Patterson or anybody else go through all that work and give us information, and it's just there on the documents.
It's a different thing if you're asking for an answer, a quick answer. Trustee Thorpe was asking something that I thought, well, maybe we should have that put out on the table. The question about why are we spending $54,000 on this? That's one thing, that's an answer that's discreet, it's limited. It, I, the, I think more of the issue was the involvement of staff time, so to produce extensive reports, so.
I respect that, I just want all those to be on the same page.
Yeah, and I, and I was planning on bringing that up, but thank you, Trustee Barry, for starting the conversation. What everybody in the audience needs to remember is that no single individual board member has any authority whatsoever. The only authority we hold is as a group seated at this table. So the only time that we can make a decision is when we are here and ready to vote. So when these types of questions are asked, that, because somebody is thinking along the lines of either deciding on a policy issue or some guidelines that we have in place or whatever, it can only, that decision can only be made here at this public board meeting. So the question should really be generated here as well when it comes to those kinds of concerns, and that's why we have a dedicated spot on the agenda for it.
Sure.
So is there any other questions or clarifications anybody needs?
We're still on non-agenda items.
Are you, are you finished? Okay, next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements.
2019 graduation highlights?
Yeah, so we have a little video that we're going to play, and this would have been played last month, but we didn't have power here at ASC, and we were at the college and want to thank President Cavalluna for-
It happens every summer, doesn't it?
Yeah, hosting us, so.
It's our annual, annual power outage.
Yeah, that says something about our grid, maybe.
Good evening, staff, parents, esteemed guests in the class of 2019. Imam Ahraa al-Salam once said, "Honor your family for which they are the wings with which you fly and the hands with which you fight. They are the home that you always return to. Our home was found four years ago, the day we entered high school."
Ever since we first walked the halls as freshmen, we've waited for this day to come, to put on our caps and gowns and sit on the same rows like many before us. But to make it where we are, we battled worksheets and testing, our phones getting taken away, and even facial acne.
This school has given us the tools we need to lead our community, to find our purpose and give back for what we have been given. Therefore, as you lift yourself up to new heights, lift those around you along the way.
The most obvious benefit of kindness is that you make others feel good, and in making others feel good, you inspire them to want to do something kind for you or for someone else. When you commit to a kind act, those around you will take note, and your kindness can have a ripple effect.
You can all achieve anything you put your mind to, so long as you stay focused on your goals, you tell everybody you made what it is you'd like to do, and you never lose sight of those things. You may fall down, but of course, it's important to get up again. You may fail, but failure is not a block to success. In fact, it is a part of it.
I recall a quote from an unknown source that said, "Better in oops than a what-if." We all encounter these oops moments. Many of you may have felt overwhelmed with challenges, but rather than letting those oopses determine your direction, leaving you on the sidelines asking, what if, you moved forward.
In the end, follow your dreams and put in all your effort to make it true. Don't try to shape yourself to fit into someone else's shoes. Your dreams and your intentions are for you and for you only.
(Music) I close my eyes and I can see a world that's waiting up for me, but it feels like home.
Time is a very important commodity for all of us. Songs have been sung about it. You've heard sayings like, "Time flies when you're having fun," "Time heals all wounds," and "Time waits for no one." Seniors, sometimes you feel that time might go slow, but how quick was this- Seniors, sometimes you feel that time might go slow, but how quick was this last year of school, and how quick was your high school years?
Your education will not stop here, but rather, you will accelerate even more to gain your education credentials, which will help you attain life goals.
As Albert Einstein once said, "Education is what remains after one has forgotten what one has learned in school." We have learned how to learn, and we have been taught not so much what to think, but how to think, and that is the true measure of early college education.
I'm hoping that you'll come back to Fortson and to your Dearborn community in the near future, and to give back, and to continue building on the legacy tradition that we have built here.
More than anything, I urge you all to dream and to dare, and don't be afraid of failing in your aspirations. Your life is about breaking your own limits and outgrowing yourself to live your best life.
Success, define yours, otherwise your happiness is not a guarantee. Passion, embrace yours, otherwise you'll never fully know the value of your work. And purpose, find yours, otherwise your life will lack direction.
We're so proud of all these seniors here today. These students have worked hard and overcame many obstacles along the way. They have so much potential, and we hope they use this potential to the fullest. We wish you nothing but success and happiness. We ask that you keep your kind hearts and always make room to give back to others.
Well, seniors, here we are. All of the reports, projects, and papers have been graded, all the tests have been taken, and all of your classes completed. It seems that you are ready to graduate. Well, not so fast. Your good old superintendent has one more assignment for you to complete, one more lesson to learn, and one more opportunity to prepare you for life after high school.
First, I'd like you to take that phone, point it straight up in the sky, in the air, high over your head, and take a photo of the sky. Hashtag that picture, the sky's the limit.
I've witnessed countless accomplishments made by many of you in the classroom, in athletics, and in other extracurriculars. But most importantly, I've witnessed each of you grow into your authentic selves, serving as a testament to the potential held within all of you.
For the past four years, we've shared countless hours together trying to figure out who we truly are. We made friends who later became family. We gathered together, hands high in the air, showing our Fortson pride.
The world will behold our might as family and as individuals, but most importantly, as Thunderbirds. It is our legacy, it is our band.
Be open-minded to new opportunities and adventures, but most importantly, be a friend to all, and you will find yourself on the path made just for you.
I truly want to tell you how much I appreciate your letting us be in your lives for the last four years. We love you very much, we know you're going to be successful, we look forward to seeing you in the future and celebrating your successes with you. Congratulations.
Thank you, class of 2019, for all you've done for me. I will never forget my amazing years that I spent with my newfound family.
By the power invested in us by the state of Michigan, we now pronounce you the 2019 graduates of Dearborn High School. We now pronounce you graduates of Etzel Ford High School. We now pronounce you 2019 graduates of Dearborn Public Schools Magnet High School.
I now pronounce you graduates of Henry Ford Early College.
We now pronounce you graduates of Fortson High School for year 2019.
Best day of the school year.
Just quickly, I'd like to add thank yous to Eric Chickbry, Jacob Farah, and our freelance crews who come in and do all of those graduations for us, and then take them all, edit them all down. They are playing constantly on our cable channel 19, and while we still, yes, we do still have a cable channel that we air all of these programming, all this programming on, but they're also available on the district's YouTube channel, so you can watch them anytime you want at your leisure, share them with relatives across the country or across the seas. So just thank you all for the opportunity for us to share a little bit of what we do over in the communications office.
Thank you. I'm going to invest in the voice coach. Oh, Trustee Barry?
We still on the acknowledgements?
Yeah.
Did you have something to say?
No.
Okay, I'd just like to acknowledge a gentleman here with us in the audience that usually gets me in trouble, because I know Trustee Thorpe and Trustee McDonald always ask me, where you get these questions from? Usually, Mr. John Roslowsky and I are on the phone for a good half hour, 45 minutes on Monday mornings, and this morning, sure enough, he called me, he's talking about the bond, he's talking about this, we've talked about buses before. I said, John, you always get me in trouble. Show up to a meeting. I come in and I see him here. Mr. John Roslowsky is a Korean War veteran. Thank you for your service to our country. He continues to serve our community under a creation commission. Mr. Roslowsky always gives of his time, treasure, and talent to our community. He started a pilot program, Boy State, at Fortson High School, and now we're looking, with the help of Director Shannon Peterson, we're looking to expand on that, to take it to Etzel Ford and Dearborn High. Boy State, you say, what is that? That's exactly my question was when he first presented it to me. I guess this is a program in the summer that the American Legion pays for, and it's, this is the same program that most presidents and most top CEOs have attended. And recently, John found a, he told me not to mention the amount of money, but a lot of money that he would like to talk to our counselors. I know there's a meeting coming up that Director Peterson invited him to. He wants to bring some more scholarship money to our district. So, John, thank you for all you do for the city of Dearborn.
Much appreciated. Any other?
That's it.
Okay, next, please.
Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Policy Committee meeting July 22, 2019, Board Report 19-13, and regular P-12 meeting June 24, 2019, Board Report 19-14. Recommended action is to make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support? Are there any corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Please, please attach a unanimous roll.